Meeting November 5th, we're glad you're all here. We will open this meeting with a land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Girojiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. Acknowledgement, our acknowledgement, this acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And we do have no closed session, so let's move on to roll call.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Bergel?
Here. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And we had no closed session, so mayor's announcements. We will first hear a proclamation on Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Councilmember Moulton? Is anyone here to receive this proclamation this evening? Oh, come on up, please. Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 17 through 23rd, 2024. Whereas, the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2024 is being homeless is not a crime and housing is a human right. And whereas, people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas, the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Eureka, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas, the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County Food Assessment that hunger is a daily experience and that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. And whereas, while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable healthcare, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contributes to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. And whereas, the aim of the National Coalition for the Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services, as well as meals, food, supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to homeless and hung, to the homeless and hungry. And now, therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that November 17 through 20, 17 through 23rd, 2024 is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems.
Oh, okay. You can hear me now? Yeah. My name is Winchell Dellenbeck. I reside in McKinleyville, California. I'm a representative of AHA, Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. I am a board member of Healthcare for All California, and a member of CARA, the California Alliance for Retired Americans. All of these people, they have, they have problems. I wanted to thank the city council for the proclamation. This is a really serious, important issue. And I think the proclamation speaks for itself. You know, I guess where I come from is my spiritual faith and compassion for those who suffer, and homelessness is an issue I think we're just gonna have to deal. I wish in the proclamation it says eradicate. I don't know that that's ever gonna happen. Yeah. While progress has been made on dealing with hunger and homelessness, the issue of hunger and homelessness remains probably the most challenging to obtain the resources. And I think that's where we really buy it up in Humboldt County is there just aren't enough resources to tackle it. You know, and I think everybody knows, we're still trying to build housing. So, I wanted, you know, the main thing I want to do, because I know we've come a long way and we have a long way to go on this issue, but I, I don't want to be negative on what you want to do. I brought some organizations that are working on it because I think we have come a long way, and I think they understand how deep this issue, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Winchell.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Davis. I'm the Special Projects Manager for the City of Eureka's Uplift and Cape Programs. And I just want to mention a few of the things that the city has been doing over the years. We have our Rapid Rehousing Program. We just actually implemented our homelessness prevention program. We have our wonderful outreach team and our employment program that's been going on for almost 10 years now. And this really couldn't have been done, well, first of all, without the support of city leadership and both elected and appointed, and our community partners. We are dealing with a very complex and dynamic problem, and recently, in the last several years, the collaboration is just becoming, you know, closer and closer with, between the city, the county, and so many different community partners, nonprofit organizations. I just can't say enough about, you know, the Humboldt County Department Health and Human Services. We've been able to receive over $5 million worth of grants since 2019. A lot of that came, passed through the county, and it really allowed us to do a lot of the great work that we do today. But we couldn't have done, you know, we wouldn't be where we are and wouldn't have been able to impact the families and the lives that we have without our local partners with Betty Chin, the Rescue Mission, Free Meal, there's so many places, and I just want to, I think, and it's not just our team of Uplift and Cape, it's every, you know, almost every person in this city, in one way or another, supports this, this goal of the city, whether it's, you know, HR or finance, public works. This is a team, and really, our frontline workers really do feel the support of this entire city. And I just want to thank you for supporting our programs and all the progress that we're making.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Hannah Ozanian, and tonight I am representing St. Vinnie's. I am grateful to be a volunteer and board member there. St. Vinnie's, our local chapter started in the mid-'60s in the wake of the 1964 flood, so there was suddenly a very big need to serve individuals and families, right, in the wake of that natural disaster. And over time, it was really discovered by the folks at St. Vinnie's that hunger was a huge need, and so in 1980, they built the St. Vincent de Paul Free Meal Kitchen down on Third and A Streets, and it started operating in 1981. And since then, we have served nearly 4.5 million meals. It is a very important organization for many of the most vulnerable people in our community. It's where they not only receive their meal, but they have community, they have trust with our team and our volunteers. We work with many other local organizations. We have Betty's Showers there. Unfortunately, Betty wasn't able to be here tonight. She wanted to be. We have the Providence Community Resource Program run by Brian Olson, which is absolutely amazing. We had Open Door Mobile Medical there today. They were packed. And of course, Uplift, Sea Set Care. There are so many wonderful organizations in our community, and I just ask as a volunteer for folks to support an organization that you connect with. Many hands make light work. It's so hard to be homeless and hungry, but like any other challenge, it's a lot easier when you have somebody in your corner. So I just ask you to think about our neighbors in need, and again, thank you for your time and attention to this very important issue.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you very much. That's Justice Mattering, and she mentioned, there are a lot of good people working on this issue every day, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, friends. Okay, our second proclamation is Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week with Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you, Mayor. In recognition of, oh wait, is anybody here?
Is there anyone here to receive this proclamation? Chief, and good.
Excellent. In recognition of Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week, November 11 through 15, 2024. Whereas, law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend upon law enforcement records and professional staff personnel to provide them with these vital services. And whereas, information is the lifeblood of any organization, and accurate law enforcement records must be created, collected, processed, maintained, disseminated, and disposed of in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. And whereas, citizens have an expectation law enforcement records are maintained with accuracy and integrity, overseen by staff dedicated to continual professional development and the highest standards of operational efficiency. And whereas, enforcement records and professional staff personnel are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected law violators. And whereas, these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in serving the public, maintaining criminal statistics, and assisting patrol and investigators tracking felons, and improve apprehension strategies. And whereas, it is important to recognize California, California's law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement, law enforcement system. And whereas, the Eureka Police Department Records Section is responsible for the integrity of law enforcement records for prosecutors, allied agencies, and citizens, tracking missing and wanted persons, accounting for recovered stolen vehicles, firearms, and property, live scan and fingerprint services, call-taking, creation, and verification of statistical records for the Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Investigations, and a host of behind-the-scenes duties in support of the department and city goals. Now, therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bergel and the City, Eureka City Council, do hereby recognize and express support for the Eureka Police Department Records Section and Support Personnel for their invaluable service to the department and the city, and proclaim November 11 through 15, 2024 as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day in Eureka.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and everyone. Thank you for the proclamation. On behalf of Christina Laramore, our records manager, Serenity, Stephanie, and Beau, and our two volunteers, Barbie and Teresa, we really appreciate the recognition tonight. To say that, just the things that Councilmember Bauer said about behind-the-scenes pieces, the work is never ending for them. Not only do they do all the tasks that you talked about, but they also greet and take care of probably 7,000 to 8,000 citizens a year at the front counter, and, and all kinds of crises and all kinds of needs. So their work is never done, and it's very vital to the success of our department and to the service of our community members. So I am greatly appreciative for all the work that they do. We celebrate them every day, but it's nice to have a week for them to be recognized, and we will be taking them to lunch next week and celebrating them and taking good care of them for that week. And the love we have for them and the appreciation is throughout the department. So thank you for recognizing them tonight and for all you guys do. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything? No? Okay, well, I just have a few mayor's announcements, and then we'll move on to presentations. I did have some travel. I went to the League of California Cities with the rest of the council. That's always a great time to connect with other communities, to see what they're doing and how we can grow ourselves as a community. I'm always baffled by the fact that when I'm there, I'm, I go to the breakout sessions, and so many times, Eureka is so far ahead of anything that is really happening. But it's really great to be, be available to do that. I attended several of the sessions, some on transportation and housing, and then I did participate in one panel. It was on decorum and on not mistaking kindness for weakness, and that was a really great opportunity to realize that Eureka is not the only place where this divisiveness is happening. I mean, you see it on the news all the time, but, you know, when you sit in chambers, you realize that it can get really divisive in here, and trying to find solutions so that everybody feels safe and comfortable and confident speaking in the meeting has been really important and a challenge. So it was wonderful to be able to connect with other people that have had the same experiences, similar experiences, and to share our tools that we have in our toolbox so that we can grow into a better and more safe place for people to be and feel confident and comfortable that regardless of your political views or who you are or what you have, you're welcome here, and everybody gets their three minutes. And so that was a really wonderful, wonderful thing. Today, I went to the AMVETS Department of California Service Foundation event, discussing stigma and veteran suicide prevention. It was a beautiful event, a lot of information. Something that was really wonderful is that, just like was mentioned in the, with the proclamation, we have so many opportunities for people to get help in our community, so many opportunities, that, but people don't necessarily know how to research, how to find them sometimes. And so it was really wonderful being with these people and listening to the different programs that they had. They had Tribal Health, they had Nation's Finest, and then, of course, AMVETS in our local AMVET division. So it was really, it was an honor to be there and to experience that with them. Just for fun, I ran at Bark for the, Bark at the Park, which I always loved that event, and then, and Boo at the Zoo, of course. And then lastly, I just want to give a big shout out. Again, we're talking about our community and how our community works together, which I think is critical for a healthy community. So last weekend on Saturday, I attended, first time in a long time, the Pack Out Green Teens Cleanup. And that Saturday at Hickshory Trail, after 10 years of being, in, doing the work, they collected a million pounds of trash, million pounds over the last 10 years. Incredible. This is all volunteers. This is all volunteers in our community, and I just want to share my appreciation because it just goes to show, this is how, working together, we get stuff done, and we get things done in a positive way, and I just, I'm so appreciative when we can work together like that. It's just such a big deal to me and to our community. And lastly, went to the ribbon cutting for the Grind today. She's got a new place at, at the courthouse if you get an opportunity. And then I did attend the Celebration of Life for Holly Klingel, and the reason I mention that is because she was such a wonderful person and an advocate for the vulnerable populations in our city, and I just, it was an honor to be there as well. So those are my mayor announcements for now, and we will move on to presentations. And we have Suzanne from the North American Mental Health Services here to share with us about other services happening in our, in our city. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here as a representative of North American Mental Health, just to kind of get the word out in the community, like you were saying. I've, since I took over managing the Eureka Clinic almost two years ago, I've really noticed that there's a disconnect between the behavioral health services that are in the community. We don't seem to know about each other. So I've been trying to work hard to get connected, make personal connections with other people at these communities. We're starting to be able to work more, like with Uplift, the care team there, we work closely with them, New Life Discovery, just getting our name out there. The clinic, or the company was founded in 2012 over in the Red Bluff area, but they opened the clinic in Eureka in 2019. Their main focus is the partnership in Medicare populations, which usually they have a harder time finding those services, so we're able to serve them better. We're not, we don't have very many private insurance contracts right now, so it's mainly the partnership in Medicare people. We try to focus on the mild to moderate, and let county take care of moderate to, to high problems, but we are having some overflow from the county too right now. People are coming more our way because we're able to get them in for medication management a little bit sooner, probably only a few weeks. We do have a waitlist for therapy, so that's what we provide, is the medication management and in-person therapy services. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're there. We're, we're on the backside at Winco, where Tuesday morning used to be. We have a really beautiful clinic, once you walk in the door. Doesn't necessarily look like from the outside, but once you're inside, it's really nice. Lots of nice offices in there. We have a great front desk staff who make people comfortable and just let people know they can, they can self-refer, they can call us, we'll help them out, and we can get them the services that they need, and if anybody has any suggestions for where else we can reach out and make connections, I'm open to hearing that too, so that's all.
And Suzanne, is there a phone number people could reach you at?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
I got to take a visit of the, the facility. It is a beautiful facility, and you do telehealth and in-person, is that correct?
Yeah, yep, I do, I do have one, well, I'll have two people that can do telehealth and then mainly in-person, yeah.
Wonderful. Are there any questions from council? Thanks so much for being here, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And next up, we will have Sean McLaughlin from Access Humboldt to introduce the new director of Access Humboldt. Exciting stuff happening. Welcome.
Aloha, I'm Sean McLaughlin, former executive director for Access Humboldt and the founding one, so I, I have a lot of that history and remember that Access Humboldt was created by the cities and the county working together to negotiate the, with, as a social contract, the benefits from the cable operator that created the Community Media Center, that set aside the channels, that improved the TV coverage that you have here. And you happen to have, right here, as a city resource, one of the original conveners and founders of the, of that whole discussion in Pam Powell, who was there before I got here, doing some, involved with some of that community organizing. So I've had a very fruitful, long tenure, it feels like, but I'm very, very excited this evening to have the opportunity to introduce the, the new executive director for Access Humboldt, Christina Marie Jeffers, who is a very accomplished filmmaker, community organizer, a visionary, an entrepreneur in the creative media space, who is relocating here from Sacramento to take the helm. So Christina Marie.
Welcome.
We didn't have any presentation, but I wanted to make sure.
Did you want to say a few words?
Just thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you all, and just if we can be a resource for you in any way, just pick up the phone, let me know. Okay, great, thank you.
And I would just like to take a moment, if we could, to thank you, Sean, for all of your great work. I'm gonna give you one of these. Big appreciation. Thank you.
Aloha, thanks.
All right. Moving on, we have a presentation by Vero Broadband Introduction. Welcome.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Alida Nicholas, and I'm the Community Relations Specialist at Vero Fiber, Eureka's newest fiber internet provider. The company is based out of Colorado, but I am a Blue Lake resident, and I am actually from Arcata. I moved back to the area a few years ago, and I deeply love this community. I look forward to companies coming here, wanting to better Humboldt County, better our cities, and I'm very excited to be a part of that, to bring more economic development to this area of providing jobs. We have a wonderful project manager, construction manager, and we are hiring for so many more roles, and I am so excited to see how it develops in this community. No problem. Thank you. All right, so I'll talk a little bit about who Vero is. So relatively young company, but they have had so much work in the last few years already done. So in 2017, it was founded by a group of veteran telecom executives, and their initial intent was to provide fiber internet to school districts and underserved communities. So completely taking away thinking of cities who already, you know, have a lot of different internet access and really focusing in on rural regions, similar to Humboldt County, that are just in need of more competition and a reliable internet connection. And then, two years later, they began to expand their fiber services. And then in 2022 came the Fiber to the Home Initiative, which is what we are now bringing to Eureka. So this further expanded the service offerings, and they first established this within Colorado. And just a year later, they doubled the amount of homes that they were passing through with their fiber initiatives, and by 2024 have now moved all throughout Colorado in so many different small towns. And now we are also in two different parts of Texas, and now in California. There we go. And so you probably have seen our construction company, Glass Roots. You might have seen them driving around already. So this is our in-house entity, and part of why Vero Fiber wanted to do that is that we're able to have weekly meetings discussing construction updates with them. We're able to really monitor that we're bringing quality service to every single region that we go to. We're making sure that safety is our top priority, that residents are safe with our best safety-specific training, and we always want to make sure that there are minimal disruptions. We really appreciate that the community is allowing us to come in here, and we want to make sure that our neighbors are getting back to their street, and there's nothing too hectic going on, and that it's just a little bit of disturbance before they're able to get some great fiber internet. So this map shows where our first Phase 1 of construction is. So you can see here on a broader scale where we'll be constructing, and this is available on our website, but I just wanted to point out a few notable locations where we'll be. So you can see a few schools, we'll be right by Zane Middle School, Alice Burney, and Eureka High, by lots of great nonprofits, Food for People, the Community Center, and Morris Graves, and then we're by so many great local businesses. And then our Phase 2 locations are going to include some more Eureka neighborhoods. So we've been receiving so many comments and questions, asking when we're coming to Cun or Myrtle Town or Pine Hill, and that is next. And so we're so excited to begin continuing expansion in Eureka. And so this is a little information about our current construction. So the entire project is going to span over the course of 12 months, but right now, you can see us on H, I, M, and N Streets. You can see us with, throughout Boone, Carson, Hayes, the Henderson Center. I just went the other day and checked on construction, and I hadn't been there in a while and saw all the beautiful murals. And then our construction crew right across the street from Joanne's. And so the way that we're moving through these areas is in our own zones, which equal roughly to about 300 homes each. And so we're just dividing it that way that our crews are able to move through, we're providing fiber internet access to local businesses who are interested, but also getting all of our homes. You know, our different plans really allow for, to be able to have multiple users, so this will hopefully really help families throughout Eureka, but also all of our wonderful businesses here. And so you can see there are some nearly completed areas, so this means that we've had our aerial footage done, but we're also moving through the many parts of construction pieces. Our construction manager and crew have been so wonderful with moving through that. And the turn-up date for these customers is hopefully the end of the year, before 2025. They've just been so hard at work to get this. You can see on this map, just through some of the areas where we're almost done, so over by the Congressional Christian Church, on J Lane, over on Hodgson. And then here you can see we're on L, K, Carson, especially that second image, you can see, we're over by the Humboldt County Planning Department, Anderson. So you'll, you'll see our crews through so many areas, but by the end of the year, hopefully you won't see us there, and you'll just see our fiber internet. you won't see us there, and you'll just see our fiber internet. And so this is a little some details about what those packages look like for residents. So there's four different plans for residents to choose from, and this is all available on our website to check out. But part of this that we're really hoping for is just providing a really quality connection. You know, with our company, we want to provide competition for communities to choose from. I think the power of that choice is just really important, especially in a rural community like Eureka, we often have only one of something. And so I think it's so great now that we have a few different companies that people can choose from, and they're able to compare and see whatever works better for their home. And so we're really excited to be able to provide that. And part of that is making sure that we have really friendly and great customer service. You know, it's the worst when your internet is not working and you need something, and you just want to talk to a live person. So we really, we hold that standard very dearly of making sure that, you know, we value that internet is just a utility that practically everyone needs at this point, and we want to make sure that it's a reliable connection. And so part of what comes with our packages is, you know, the router, we have technical support, and if you want an app, if you're a little more tech savvy, you can check through that. You can even use that if there are any issues going on to speak to a customer service representative. And and it's really easy to also set up guest networks when you have visitors. And then a really great program that we have is our Vero's Heroes program. So we really appreciate everyone in the community, already seeing a couple of them tonight, police, firefighters, EMTs, veterans, and nurses and teachers. We offer a discounted rate of either $10 per month, or you can receive our most popular package of one gig of internet. That's normally $89.95 for $50 a month. And we do that because we absolutely want to connect these people. We know that they are so hard at work, especially in this more rural region where we really, really need them, and so we really like to get back to the community in that way. And in terms of community collaboration, one aspect of us moving into these areas, especially out of state, is we really want to get to know the community we're in. You know, that's part of providing local jobs, that we have a few people who you can see around town, and you know their face, and also that we're providing jobs and strengthening our job opportunities here. But some of our goals, working with the city of Eureka, is continuing to support local business and business groups. So that's through events, outreach, sponsorships, working with local businesses to uplift them, and then also supporting the city's departments. So with the firefighters, with the police, if there's any upcoming events or anything that you're doing where you need support, we would really like to be your right-hand man and be able to help the city with that, especially with the holidays coming up. And finally, we just want to provide affordable, reliable broadband to our constituents, businesses, and our enterprises that are so essential to the community. You know, especially recently, there's been so much discussion of our medical services and how needed that is, and we really want to make that lasting impact, especially as someone who's from the area. I've seen how much growth has happened in this community, and I really believe that Vero Fiber can continue to bring us to that next level, and for our public safety locations, for our hospitals, really providing that them with that connection that they need. And something else that is completely, well, slightly, with the city of Eureka, but also a little separate, is that we were recently awarded a grant called the Arcata Bay Grant. So we were afforded awarded $4.4 million. The entire project is going to be $6.3 million, but we will be funding the rest. And this is aims to bring new fiber optic infrastructure to Indianola, Samoa, Fairhaven, and Manila. And why those locations were granted to us by the CPUC were that this grant will provide fiber internet access to over 500 homes, businesses, and public safety locations. And when we looked at this map, we saw that nearly half of these locations were underserved and need affordable critical infrastructure updates. So we're really excited to give these communities multi-gigabyte fiber internet. And because we were recently awarded this grant, we do not have a project timeline yet, but as we move forward, we will be providing the city with updates, and we are very excited to work with these communities. Thank you. I have included details for our great project manager, Joe. He is always available to answer any questions, and then my contact info as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alida. Does council have any questions? No? Any comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Maltz.
Thank you, and I just want to thank you for the presentation. It's good to see some options coming in. Now we have more options in the market, it makes things better for the consumers. Thank you.
Thank you, I was taking a picture. Councilmember Conjero Stilich?
So the phase, the first phase is what you guys are working in right now? And that's going to cover, that covers all the way down into downtown?
Yeah, I can go back to that map.
And is it all of the homes and residences in it? Or I I'm curious, because my area has so many multi-unit homes, so I was just curious about how that.
Yeah, so that's one area where we're hoping to work in as well, is we know with college kids, there are so many multi-unit households and apartment complexes, and so with that we do have to gain a right of entry, and that's a different process. But we are actively looking into that and trying to provide apartments with that as well. You can see here, we are not in Old Town, so not that part of downtown, but we're near the Sequoia Park Zoo, more towards Henderson Center, Boone Street. But we actually have a thing on our website where, like right on the homepage, where you can search your address, and it'll show you if we're going to be serving your area either in this phase or the next phase, or it'll show you if it's not going to be serviced. But we use that data, and it's really important to us because we know if we see a ton of searches from a certain neighborhood, that really helps us know, is this a place we should potentially build next?
Yeah, so the that's what I was curious about is, because that blue area looks like it would cover like all of Eureka, but that's not, it's not all of the homes in those areas then.
So it, yes, so in this blue area, it would cover all of those homes. But yeah, for for now, like Cun and Pine Hill, that will be our phase two.
Can I ask one more question? I'm curious how you guys are, again, just because in, for instance, in my neighborhood, we have a lot of Victorians, and some of them are single-family homes, like mine, but some are two, three, four, five, six, or more units. And so is there a way that they're differentiating between those and so that, or are they just skipping past areas because they're like, we don't know if this is single or double or I'm just wondering what they're working off of?
Yeah, so when they go into certain neighborhoods to see where they should be building, there's a series of different tests they see of why we would go to a certain area. But we're targeting all sorts of households, and so if you see us, you know, if we're not in your neighborhood yet, it's not necessarily because it's a single-family home versus something else. It might just be because that's also how the permitting went, or what we're just able to get to right now, and what makes sense for our initial builds of also gaining that revenue. But we, as we come and construct, you know, we provide it there, and people are able to sign up early if they know we're coming to their region or neighborhood, but they're not able to like automatically get it, if that makes sense. Like, the option is there, but you also don't have to switch just because we're on your street.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm curious, I saw that you had put up there the the first responders, teachers, nurses, et cetera, for the potential discounts that they could get. And so I know that there's the federal program, and I'm blanking on the name of it, something connectivity. Is that similarly run through that, or is there going to be a low-income household offering for any of those tiers that you have?
So that program did exist before, I know, in a couple of our Colorado markets, but with that funding running out, that was no longer available. But that feedback is feedback and idea is great, and that's something that we can always pass on as an option, because, you know, we are aware of the areas we're building. There are lower-income housing as well, and we like to be very cognizant of that.
Great, well, thank you so much, Alida, for being here. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay. Slow night. So now moving on to public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Do we have anyone in chambers? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Maybe I should sign in as Calamity Jane. My my name is Phyllis Coy, and I would like the city to know that the solar-powered flashing stop sign at the northwest corner of Booner and J is very much appreciated. Please consider putting solar-powered flashing lights around new stop sign intersections so that it will be called to the attention of drivers who may not be who may be unaware of a new stop sign where there has not been one. Also, please consider painting curbs that have been faded by age and/or weather. With the rainy weather, we may be starting to receive faded curbs are very difficult to notice. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else in chambers who'd like to comment? Okay, seeing none. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay. Well, seeing no one on Zoom, we will close the public comment and move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made of a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I haven't heard of anybody wanting anything pulled. Okay, so can we get a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great, and do we have any legislative action correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance amending Chapter 51, Solid Waste Section 51.29 with Project Manager Prasker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am going to try to share a PowerPoint. Okay, it looks like it's working. Okay. My name is Robin Prasker, Project Manager with the Community Services Department, and tonight is the second reading of the ordinance update to Chapter 51 due to the state's SB 1383 regulations. This is the presentation I provided last month, so I'm just going to breeze through it again, just to catch you up, and anybody who might be watching who maybe didn't see the previous reading. So we did do a pretty big update to Chapter 51 on solid waste last year due to new requirements for the collection of trash recycling and organics, changes to contracts with franchise haulers, new requirements for certain businesses who generate edible food, and then procurement targets for the city to procure recovered organic waste products. And now what we're doing is looking at Chapter 51.29 and updating requirements for those businesses who generate food. They're called Tier One and Tier Two, defined on the screen here, and they do need to be inspected annually to ensure they're complying with the requirements. And that is what the ordinance update is providing, is to allow the County of Humboldt Environmental Health to provide those annual inspections. So what is changing in the ordinance is to register with the County of Humboldt Division of Environmental Health to pay an annual fee and then submit to that inspection. And there's some quick FAQs, we're about what the fee might be, would the inspections be unannounced. There will be an MOU brought back to you later, and we have about 33 businesses that trigger these requirements. So I do have the recommendation tonight to adopt, but happy to answer any questions about this this new ordinance update.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Thank you, Project Manager Prasker. I believe you went over this at the last meeting, but could you just say a little bit more about how the outreach for local businesses might work so that, you know, just so that we make sure that they're kind of aware of what's happening and have plenty of time to prepare?
Yeah, what's been really great is every incorporated city in the county and the county itself have actually been cost-sharing on a contract with a bound food care who specialize in food recovery, and they have been conducting outreach for, gosh, most of this year, making phone calls to find out about their current food donation programs, educating them of requirements. So there's been a lot of outreach, all tracked for our reporting to the state. And most folks are donating food. I mean, most businesses, that's what they want to be doing, and no one wants to throw away perfectly good food to eat. We're just now regulating it with this new requirement. And we'll continue to take an educational approach throughout the whole project process, and violations will really be only reserved for the most, you know, horrible cases, which are very unlikely from what I hear. So very robust education program that's consistent countywide, whether you're a business in Eureka or Arcata or Fortuna or what have you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Do you see anyone on Zoom, Shannon?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 1025-CS, an ordinance of the city council, an ordinance of the city council amending Chapter 51, Solid Waste Section 51.29.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Feature agenda items, does anyone have a feature agenda item? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I was hoping we could get an update on our participatory budgeting program.
Great. Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways? There we go. Thank you. All right. So with that, we will move on to council reports and city-related travel, and we'll start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, because there's no city manager report tonight.
Thank you. In such a rush to get home and check the the news.
So based on, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, city manager's lottery.
I think great minds, great minds think alike, as as the mayor had stated, I think that we limited to this agenda for the purpose of you guys being able to go home and watch your election results. So I currently don't have any city manager report for you guys this evening.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Thank you. Mostly, I did know that, I just mostly wanted the public to know that we weren't intentionally, or we were intentionally skipping over that item. Let's see, I did also travel to Long Beach for the Cal Cities Conference.
Thank you. Uh, future agenda items. Does anyone have a future agenda item? Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, I was hoping we could get an update on our participatory budgeting program.
Great. Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways. There we go. Thank you. All right. So with that, uh, we will move on to council reports and city-related travel. And we'll start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. Um, because there, there's no city manager report tonight.
Thank you. In such a rush to, uh, get home and check the, uh, the news.
So based on, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, City Manager Slattery. Apologies.
Great minds think alike, as, as the mayor had stated, I think that, uh, we limited to this, um, agenda for the purpose of you guys being able to go home and, um, watch your election results. So I currently don't have any city manager report for you guys this evening.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Thank you. Mostly, I, I did know that. I just mostly wanted the public to know that, uh, we, we weren't intentionally, or we were intentionally skipping over that item. Let's see, I did also travel to Long Beach for the, uh, Cal Cities Conference, um, in which I attended, uh, several sessions, a couple related to housing, some related to the, um, the legal changes around homelessness at the Supreme Court. Um, economic development session. I also, um, spoke at and helped organize a housing mixer along with Cal YMB. Uh, that was pretty fun. And let's see, um, this week I, I attended a, a, uh, presentation by the Turner Center just updating, um, cities, uh, citizens on changes in housing law. Um, so there's some interesting updates there. In particular, uh, oh, oh, I did not write down that, uh, bill number, but a bill that, uh, helps further kind of regional, regional collaboration for funding mechanisms for housing. Um, in particular, that has been implemented in larger, more urban areas like, like, um, LA and San Francisco. But there's certainly some capacity that that could be used to implement, uh, those kinds of measures in more rural regions as, as well. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too attended the League of California Cities Conference. Um, it's always an enlightening experience. I went to several sessions, including one on, uh, regional collaborations for navigating homelessness, uh, combat, combating, uh, fentanyl in our communities, cybersecurity for cities, um, reducing plastic pollution as a city. And what cities can do to help small businesses, uh, engage in greener practices, especially when money is, uh, a big concern. Uh, like you, Mayor Bagel, I find, um, I keep coming across situations where Eureka is, uh, leading the way, already trying innovative solutions, which is lovely to see, but also I'd like some even better ideas. Um, I attended a Humboldt Bay Fire Board meeting. This most reason was all about the budget. I attended a Eureka City Schools, uh, two-by-two meeting with leadership there. Um, think the most, one of the most interesting topics, um, that conversation was about improving public transportation access for students, potential for, um, free bus access for the kids. Uh, so folks can get to school on time and do those important lessons. The, uh, they let us know that the Jacobs Campus deal with the CHP is in its very last rubber stamping steps. Uh, they're all very hopeful that they'll be able to close that deal very soon. And I look forward to working with the California Highway Patrol to make sure that they, uh, make good on their promise to be good neighbors up in the second ward. I attended, um, Arts Alive, of course, uh, out on the gazebo, a really beautiful El Dia de los Muertos, uh, celebration, many community ofrendas. And the ballet folklorico dancers were just wowing the crowd. Even though it was, um, sprinkling rain and, and drizzly, there was a big crowd out. And it's wonderful, wonderful to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Uh, I think like everyone else here, I was also in attendance at the California League of Cities Conference in Long Beach. Unless it was a really weird fever dream, but you were all there. I was reappointed to the Government Transparency and Labor Relations, uh, Policy Committee. I, I think one of, uh, my, my favorite opportunities was the updates that they did. I think it was almost on the first day about, uh, California economics and just the way that that works and the, uh, the strike that had just been resolved, at least over on the East Coast from, uh, the, uh, the longshoreman and the discussion about how that could potentially impact us here, but didn't because, uh, we weren't on strike over here, but just over there. And so, um, had the opportunity to talk with one of the vendors that's supplying the tiny houses to, uh, Betty Chin's Blue Angel Village. And, uh, it was interesting. I ran into Councilmember Bauer and we had that conversation with that gentleman about the paver. Uh, that, oh, and, and, yeah, yeah, I'm going to let you talk about that one. It's ju- just the way that it works seemed like magic, but I'm interested to see how it might work in Ferndale. That's where they're supposed to be, at least having their debut in this county. Um, and, uh, much like, uh, Councilmember Moulton, I participated in, uh, our chamber two-by-two with the Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, I missed out on the one with Eureka City Schools. I was out of town and having some technical difficulties. Uh, but at least with the chamber, we talked about, uh, our improved law enforcement staffing, the response to the high school lockdowns, uh, that were occurring almost weekly there, uh, throughout October, and local housing developments and reexamining and updating our campaigning ordinance. Uh, had the opportunity to attend a fundraising bingo for the women's club to refurbish their kitchen. I thought it was fantastic. It was hosted by the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence. I was glad to see our mayor there as well. Uh, and then, yeah, also this past weekend, the opportunity to attend and see Central del Pueblo perform there. Uh, just perform at, uh, North Coast Repertory Theater, the dances, the music that they had there. And then, of course, the separate event at, uh, the gazebo with the, uh, community ofrendas. I don't know who's putting that together these last few years, but I think they're doing fantastic work and watching it grow over the last few, uh, has been, has been fantastic. And then, uh, later this month, uh, I have the opportunity to go to the National Association for Latino Elected and Appointed Officials for their First Time Elected Officials Conference in Dallas. So I'm likely going to be unable to attend our, uh, November nineteenth meeting, at least in person. I won't be here. And then next month, I may have to miss our first meeting in December for the, uh, Elected Officials Protecting America. They're having a leadership certificate program in early December, uh, in Washington DC, and I've been invited to that. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Yeah, I also attended the League of Cities, surprise. Um, I, I went to some really, probably some you think is pretty boring, Inflation Reduction Act presentation. It's all about money. Um, I'm always trying to chase money down for the city. But, uh, it was pretty interesting how much money's out there for, for cities to, to upgrade infrastructure and that kind of thing. Um, presentate or meeting on climate change, coastal cities meeting was really interesting. Um, people have way different issues, um, the focus mainly being on permitting, uh, in the coastal zone was a big topic. Um, yeah, and I, and we had one vote, uh, I represent the Redwood Empire Division, uh, for the board of directors. And we had one vote on a, a topic that was, um, not all that exciting, but still interesting nonetheless. Um, I also, uh, we had a Humboldt Bay Fire District meeting. Um, I did a ride-along, I think it was in October. It feels like time has flown. Um, I did, uh, a ride-along for the day with, uh, one of the crews. It was great. Um, I had a really good time seeing how they operate and it's a little bit quiet that day. Um, but it was a, a really cool thing to do. Um, RCEA, we had a meeting, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and, um, we talked about nuclear power again. I'm sure you heard about that. And let's see, I, I want, yeah, one other topic at the League of Cities was an economist that talked about, um, state of, uh, California economy. And so much of what he said was, it's so much about perception. You know, his view of all these different issues that affect the city. It seems, you know, like that it's really, perception really drives a lot of things that things aren't that bad, according to this world-renowned economist, but I thought it was really fascinating. And, uh, uh, Councilmember, um, uh, Fernandez was talking about Zipit. Zipit paving system, which will be in Ferndale, I think, middle of November. Um, we'll have to go check that out. Uh, it'd be pretty fun. And, and one other thing I, I got to do recently is I got to talk to Eureka High students about, um, politics and campaigning in a couple of classes, and they were doing an assignment, um, about flyers, like how to campaign flyers. And it was the, the best thing I've done in a long time, like talking and lots of questions about how the city is run. I've been wanting to do this my whole, uh, first term in office. So I really appreciate, um, my, uh, the teacher, Maya Broadke, for inviting me and all the students that were there. I was really had a great time talking with them. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Conjero Stiloch.
Yeah, I know I'm going to forget something because it was a little while, but, um, so I also attended the League of, um, California Cities. Um, and I figured out, I've, now that I've gotten to do this a few times, I've figured out which breakout sessions are of most interest to me. Um, and so I attended mostly the ones on changes in the law, um, and some stuff about, um, homelessness and exercise of free speech as elected officials, um, and some things like that. Uh, I also attended Boo at the Zoo. Um, I did lots of Halloween stuff because I'm my little guy's favorite holiday. Um, I, Cal Cities, I attended an online thing, Cal Cities Local Climate Initiatives, how to get grant funding for different projects. Um, went to the waterfront annex ribbon cutting, um, went to HWMA, um, in place of Councilmember Castellano. It feels like I'm giving a report on two months ago, but I think this really was this last month. Um, went to the Humboldt Bay Fire Open House, um, also went to Festi Hondo Nuestra at CR. And then I also got to take this Indigenous Philosophy and Politics through the University of Arizona. It was this, um, a, a Zoom presentation that was really interesting. So, um, that kind of covers it.
Well, with that, I hope we all have a most excellent evening and that tomorrow is a new day. We're adjourned.